I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Nisswa Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for Tuesday, September fifth at six P M. Roll call please. Jesse's on.
Danny Mendel.
Sean Wildin.
Josh Young.
Gary Harris.
Avery's.
Maggie Wentler.
Bethany Satterland.
Are there any additions or delations to the agenda? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, to approve the meeting minutes for August first, two thousand twenty-three, are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? No. Here in none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. All opposed, motion carries. Our next item is an open forum. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak towards something not on the agenda this evening? Looks like we have somebody ready to go.
Yes.
So fire away.
Uh, if it, uh, please the planning commission, I'd like to read a statement and then I'd, uh, like to, uh, discuss it with you afterwards. My name is Stephen Wymore. I live at fifty-one fifty-six Crossroads in Nisswa, Minnesota. I have served many times as an election judge here in Nisswa. Um, I served eight years on the Warroad City Council, where I served on the Liquor Commission, Budget Commission, Parks and Rec Board, Joint Powers Board with Independent School District six ninety, and various ad hoc committees. I'm a retired school superintendent and music teacher. On September tenth, two thousand ten, I was appointed to the Minnesota Board of School Administrators by Governor Tim Pawlenty. The Minnesota Board of School Administrators oversees the licensing of superintendents, principals, special ed directors, and community ed directors. The Minnesota Board of School Administrators disciplines its licensees who break the law and oversees the educational administration programs at Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. My last service was as superintendent at the Red Lake Public Schools on the Red Lake Indian Reservation. While at Red Lake, I served as the state coordinator for the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools and the Minnesota Rural Education Association's Indian Education Committee. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. I know how much of a commitment it is of your time, talent, and your patience. Um, it was necessary and when I did it. To serve our fellow citizens in a government position. I watched the last city council meeting in August and was concerned by the widely held sentiment of prohibition regarding the use of cannabis anywhere within this jurisdiction. The earliest ban on the sale of marijuana was nineteen oh six, when the Pure Food and Drug Act was passed in Congress and signed into law by President Theodore Roosevelt. The law created the Food and Drug Administration, which was given the task of regulating the safety of all foods and drugs that would be consumed by humans. Provisions in the law also limited the sale of some drugs without a prescription from a physician and required specific labeling for any drug with the potential to be habit forming. This meant that any product that contained alcohol, marijuana, opium, cocaine, and other addictive substance had to indicate it to the consumers. And for those that are in my age group, Coca-Cola used to have a little disclaimer that said contains cocaine. So it's just something that I remember. It also limited the marijuana for research studies overseen by the FDA and also the importation of a drug from Mexico not intended for medical purposes. In two thousand fifteen, I attended meetings held by Paul Thiessen regarding the decriminalization of cannabis in Minnesota. This was before Ryan Winkler became an activist for cannabis legalization. I was living in Badet, Minnesota at the time, and I expressed my concern with the medical marijuana law in Minnesota and the prohibitive distances one had to travel to reach a primary care physician that was on the registry. And the closest certified physician at that time was in the Twin Cities. Additionally, at that time, the closest dispensary was in Moorhead, Minnesota. A three to four hour trip to pick up a prescription. This negatively impacted citizens who smoke cannabis for various medical conditions. I am a multiple myeloma survivor and am currently a statistical outlier for surviving nine years after diagnosis of this incurable disease. My disease is on the list of diseases that automatically qualify you for use of medical marijuana. I suggest that people use cannabis more for more than just recreational high. It does have medicinal value. The possession and use of cannabis is now legal in Minnesota. However, under this new law, an individual may not use cannabis flower, cannabis products, or hemp derived consumer products in any manner that involves the inhalation of smoke, aerosol, or vapor at any location where smoking is prohibited under this section. It may be important to consider the enforcement of a more restrictive ordinance to eliminate the use of cannabis in any areas where smoking is currently permitted within the city limits, which may lead to criminalizing the use of cannabis that was just legalized statewide. It seems counterintuitive to once again prohibit the use of cannabis in all public spaces. So what people are we talking about? We're talking about adults who are twenty-one years old or older. They are capable of making mature decisions about the use of cannabis. Let me suggest that there is no need to manufacture a crisis. I don't think we have one. The state law is pretty clear. I don't have any local statistics, but I can't imagine that it's been a problem unless you stand outside the pickle and then you can smell it. I don't have, uh, those local statistics, but I think that the benefits should be explored. How does the city council propose to enforce the prohibition? Is the city going to appropriate law enforcement time to ensure compliance with the prohibitive cannabis ordinance? The anecdotal evidence I've gathered from time at local bars is that it's been ongoing for years. Nisswa has marketed the community as a tourist destination, which is a source of pride for the community. We want our community to welcome everyone, young and old, and to patronize our merchants. And consideration of the financial impact that cannabis prohibition may have on the business in our community would demonstrate the city council's commitment to a prosperous and growing community. In summary, I oppose an ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis in public places where tobacco smoking is permitted. Under local control in the new law, a local unit of government may not prohibit the possession, transportation, or use of cannabis flower or cannabinoid products authorized under the chapter. Historically, the prohibition of cannabis started in nineteen oh six in Minnesota and has lasted one hundred seventeen years. This is two thousand twenty-three, and a prohibition of cannabis takes us backward and not forward. The legalization of, uh, the use of cannabis in Minnesota is supported by sixty percent of the population approximately. How would an ordinance be enforced prohibiting the use of cannabis? Is there an anticipated problem or an actual problem with the use of cannabis in public places? Anecdotally, cannabis has been used in the public spaces in Nisswa for years before the law was passed. Consider the attraction of tourists to the community where smoking cannabis in areas where smoking tobacco is permitted will have on this tourist destination. People who have medical conditions that would qualify for use of medical marijuana no longer have to get a prescription or travel long distances to get their, uh, prescription. There are many things to consider in developing an ordinance regarding the use of cannabis in public spaces where tobacco smoking is permitted. I hope the commissioners, board members, city employees, and city counselors will moderate a prohibition to permit the reasonable use of cannabis where smoking is permitted in the city of Nisswa. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions? Amen.
Amen. Any other public comments? Good. Uh, moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Uh, first item is variance application zero two one dash two three to allow for the construction of addition to an existing garage within the Shoreline Residential Zoning District with a nineteen point nine lot line setback where thirty feet is required and a variance for total square footage of accessory structures of two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight square feet, where twenty-five hundred square feet is the maximum. Subject property is located at two five nine eight nine Highland Avenue, PID two eight one zero zero five eight six, applicant owner Perry Meyer. Bethany, your staff report.
Uh, thank you. Good evening to your young planning commission. Uh, the applicant, as you said, is seeking to obtain a variance from section twenty dash nine three accessory structure size, setback, and permit requirements to add on to an existing, um, garage. This garage, uh, was built after obtained, obtaining a variance in two thousand and eighteen to construct the garage with a fifteen foot setback at that time where thirty was required. The applicant owns both PID two eight one zero zero five eight six and two eight one zero zero five eight five. The subject property ending in zero five eight six must be considered a separate parcel of land for the purposes of sale or development pursuant to Minnesota State statute. Uh, there was a stormwater management plan, um, or there will be a stormwater management plan with a shoreline buffer required for this parcel.
Okay, Barry, if you could give us a brief overview of the project.
Okay. Well, good evening and thank you for your time and attention here. Again, I'm Perry Meyer. My wife, Luanne, and I have been part of community since nineteen eighty-four. Um, as stated, we built our home in about four years ago, and the area that I want to put the garage on is currently being used for storage. My thought is I'll just go through the six questions. Um, you have the application and those questions, but I'll verbalize the answers and I may be repeating the same information twice. So, um, the first question is, uh, what are the practical difficulties and unique circumstances and uniqueness of the, of the area? My understanding of the statue is that, um, to stay under the twenty-five hundred feet, we could build a standalone building of approximately the same dimensions, but I would have to keep ten feet away from the existing one. It'd require a longer driveway. Uh, it's just more practical for me to put it where this clearing is already, we're already using storage, uh, and add on to the building. Thereby I'll be able to utilize the electrical service as well as the in-floor heat. I'd like to continue that on with the, the boiler. The second question is, will the deviation from the ordinance still be in harmony with the general purposes? Uh, I, I believe it will be, um. Like I said, it's connecting on to an existing garage. Um, if I don't build a garage, it'll be a pontoon sitting there with a wrap on it for eight months out of year and a fish house, uh, you know, for safety and security and, and um, cosmetic purposes, I think it'd be better to have it under a roof. It would just look better in the neighborhood. Third question is, and is there a need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the property owner? Well, the driveway is there. If I put it in as it's shown in there and put that angle to it, I could utilize the existing driveway. But then in doing that, it moves the end of the building and that whole side of the building to be thirty feet from the setback. So it kind of serves two purposes by putting the addition on. But what that does is puts me over the twenty-five hundred square feet. So that wedge is where the extra hundred and sixty, some feet, uh, hundred and sixty-eight extra feet comes in. But again, that allows me to utilize the existing big building. Um, what other options are non-conforming? Again, it's just not practical for me to build a standalone storage shed ten feet away. I'd have drainage issues. I'd have to have a longer driveway, less greens, less green space because of that. I have to remove more trees. Um, the fifth question, does it impact on the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate neighbor? Um, the neighbor that it would affect the most is Mr. Jim Starkey in the corner, and he'll speak in favor of it. I had another neighbor stop in that lives across. It's not in his view, but he said he'd be willing to stop in. And then I said, I don't believe it'd be necessary since it's not in your view, but he, he would be in support of it as well. Um, it's really not visible from people in that other, across the highway there. Um, and the last question, discuss or describe the character of the area and how this proposal is consistent with. Again, I'm currently using that area for my trailer storage and I bought a pontoon that I'll be storing there next year or a fish house. So it's I'm not going to really change that part of it. Um, again, the reason for the request is so that I can attach it, put that wedge on and utilize the driveway in a more practical way. So I'm asking for the variance. Open to questions or if you would like to hear from Jim Starkey.
Yeah, if, um, if you'd like to make public comment regarding this project, uh, please step towards the desk or podium and you have five minutes.
Uh, one other comment that me and Jim have talked about, we'd like to put trees along the line between there to cover his driveway so that he doesn't view it going up. And we're planning on doing that anyway. I've planted approximately fifty trees in the last four years on my property. I spent the last day and a half before less rain came watering them. So trees are important to ours and our family. We look forward to doing that as well.
Good evening. My name is Jim Starkey and I am the next door neighbor to Mr. Meyer. And, uh, my driveway is close as there's going to affect because, you know, the thirty foot setback, it's now down to nineteen, but Mr. Meyer is a good neighbor. And, uh, I have to live next to him and I'm certainly not going to put a nix on what he wants to do. Would I prefer that he didn't do it? Yes, but that's beside the point, you know? He is a neighbor and I, I will allow him to do it. Um, I would just ask, and I've already spoken to Mr. Meyer about that, if he could put up some taller trees that when I went in, I didn't have to look at it. Looks like, looked like a condominium or something like that, and I wouldn't have to see it. And he's agreed that he will try to hide it as best he can. And, uh, I guess that's about what I got to say. I do, I'm not objecting to what he wants to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Any other questions or?
Uh, Perry, who are you, are you working with the original builder on this?
Yes, and we'd put the original type of site, it'll be smartboard on with a stone facial on front. So we want to make, make it look attractive.
Yep. What do you have for timing on this project if approved?
I'm sorry.
What's the timing on the project?
I would like to get the groundwork done this fall. I've talked to Mason Guy. It's possibility he could squeeze it in. But then next year, do the construction.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions?
No. Perry? No, I was, I paid the, paid a visit to the site today and and, uh, went over it with Mr. Meyer and, uh, from what I can see, he's, um, done a, done a pretty good job of of adding, putting this addition on rather than having a separate building in there. I know that if he did that, there'd more trees would be taken out, but he'd have to put in more paving as well. So I think, um, allowing, you know, the addition is, uh, is favorable in my, my opinion.
Thank you.
David, do you have any questions?
Just that it, it wouldn't have water supply to it, correct? It's just.
I believe that's what we had talked about. It would be.
For storage only.
Yeah, storm. But, you know, it's very far removed from the main road and my driveway would be the only thing that.
Okay.
That's not an issue.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions for Mr. Meyer, um, if we are going to make a motion, remember we need to, uh, answer the questions. And, uh, she needs some help along the way. I think we can, we can assist, but, um, yeah. I will entertain a motion if there are no more questions.
I'd like to make the motion, but I can't.
I'll take a shot at it. Um, I would, uh, I would move to, uh, prove variance application zero two one dash two three uh, to allow for construction of addition to his existing garage within the Shoreline Residential zoning district as uh, recited earlier and, uh, by the chair. Um, we have, do have to answer these questions. Um, number one, I've looked at this and I looked at it in depth and, um, I would answer, uh, yes to number one. Uh, personally, and the others can agree or disagree with this. Uh, this is an existing lot of record and a variance of fifteen feet was from the sideline was approved in a permit in twenty eighteen for the existing garage, which is being added on to. And the impervious coverage will remain below the twenty-five percent allowed by the ordinance.
Uh, Bethany, would you want us for this motion, do you want a yes or no from every member as we move down the list or would, uh, one at the end suffice?
Yes, one from each would be great.
Okay. So, yes, I agree.
Yes.
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 Number two. Is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the city of Nisswa Court of Ordinants? Uh, yes. Property owners, uh, because the addition will allow indoor storage of equipment, including boats, trailers, et cetera, uh, rather than, uh, parked it parked in the lot. So.
I, I would agree.
Yes.
Question number three is the need for variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner? I'd say yes. Because the nine hundred and sixty-eight square foot addition is a reasonable amount in order to enclose this equipment indoors and make use of the existing paved surfaces on a, on this preexisting lot.
I agree.
Yes.
Agree.
Number four. Will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Because it, yes, because it is an existing legal non-conforming structure as approved by the variance in twenty eighteen. And indoor storage of equipment will benefit the character of the locality and the neighbors have agreed, uh, to the addition.
Agree.
Agree.
Yes.
Number five. Does the need for variance involve more than economic considerations? Yes. Because a new and separate structure would expand the area occupied by buildings and paving versus the addition. And, uh, the impervious surface would also increase. So.
Yes.
Yes.
Agree.
Number, number six in this case was any other pertinent findings?
So do I have a second?
Second.
This would all be according to the, um, uh, findings of fact in the staff report and the conditions of which I believe there's two. One is a stormwater management plan and construction shall be in in con, in conformance with the plan as submitted. So.
Okay. Yeah, I have a second by Danny. All those in favor?
I.
I. All those approved. Uh, all those opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. No. Submitted that uh, the drawing does not show a second level.
That'd be one floor.
Be ground covered, yes. Yep, guest quarters aren't allowed use above a above a accessory structure.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, second item is conditional use application zero two two dash two three to obtain a conditional use permit for the construction operation of a restaurant within the central business zoning district. The subject property is located at two five two nine six South Main Street. PID two eight one two zero six seven zero and two eight one one zero five six seven applicant high tech construction owner Foy squared holdings LLC. Bethany, your staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit as required per land use table twenty dash zero one for the construction and operation of a restaurant in the central business district. The proposed restaurant will have indoor seating for a hundred with outdoor seasonal seating for an additional sixty-five. Property will be served by city sewer and private well. Water meters to be installed and detailed plumbing plans and grease trap calculations to be submitted per the public works menu included in your packet dated eight twenty-three twenty-three.
If you'd like to make public comment regarding this project, please step towards the podium and state your name. Being none on close public comments. And you want to briefly touch on the project?
Yeah, here we are again, five and a half years later in the second restaurant. Um, so yeah, we purchased, well, in the process of purchasing the uh, the obviously the old triangle building. Um, gonna put in a full service restaurant. Similar to the main street hours, so it's not gonna not gonna be a late night deal. It's gonna be open year round daily more for lunch and dinner. Um, obviously you have all the renderings and drawings there. Uh, I don't know what else else to say.
Yeah. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Danny or Sean?
I don't have any questions.
Gary, do you have any?
To get back to the the restaurant, you say it's gonna be open daily, year round.
Yep.
Is this like a a family restaurant, like a breakfast?
Definitely family. All of our restaurants are family restaurants. Um, definitely not breakfast. We're not going to dev on that. So it'll be open from eleven o'clock like main street is.
Lunch, lunch and.
Lunch and dinner. Yeah, um, close at eight, nine like we do at main street as well. So different concept, obviously than any anything that we have in town. Different than main street, different than the other restaurants. So it's gonna be a like a street taco style restaurant, not like a full Mexican restaurant like everybody's been saying around town. But it'll be more of a light street taco. Um, obviously with this, we're gonna apply for a liquor license. Um, so there will be that in the future, I'm sure, standing in the same spot, but um, so yeah, that's the concept.
Yeah, actually I do have a question. Do you guys have a name for the restaurant yet?
We're still playing with it there. Jesse, we'll let you know when we have it. You'll see it on Facebook, I'm sure at some point.
Or alongside through seventy-one.
There we go. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Are these uh, this the the final renderings is what wait?
Uh, well, we haven't broken ground yet, so it could change, but that that is right now the.
It's just, it's just kind of plain, you know, I was just wondering if it could be a little more.
More plain than the triangle. More plain than the current gas station? No, um, it's it's definitely gonna have an up north feel with a little bit modern twist to it. Those coloring like on the the teal that that was thrown in there, that could certainly change, but it's kind of that up what everybody's painting their house right now. It was white five years ago and now it's everybody's painting their house is black. This isn't fully black. It's more of like a charcoal with a lot of wood accents on it. So it's kind of fitting in that kind of new trend, I should say.
I've got nothing against teal.
That, like I said, we threw that in there.
But people, but people come up here. You know, and they it's I I realize that times change, but people come up here and they're looking for, they're looking for the the log cabin effect, stone and rock and things like that. And yeah, maybe just some.
We did that with main street. Obviously that's more of that kind of lodge feel. Um, you know, things are kind of changing up here too. So this is gonna give people, I we feel another option of more of a modern, but it's definitely gonna be a an up north field to.
That's gonna be the first first thing that people see is they come in, right? Next, next, you know, assuming they get by the the old story boat boat storage building, but uh.
Maybe that's the next one that needs to be uh, updated, but um, but yeah, yeah, I think it's 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 definitely gonna feel um, you know, it's still up north, but it's gonna have a little bit of modern twist. It's not gonna stand out, you know.
But could be made, you know, a real show showplace and I would assume that it will end up on.
It certainly will. Yeah.
So I didn't quite catch what um, the theme was. Now, I don't think it's a conspiracy, but one is wearing an Ernie sweatshirt and one is at main street. So I don't think you're trying to hide it.
Yeah, exactly.
So what's what? What's the theme?
The concept. So it's it's like a street taco. Theme, I'm I'm sure you've had street taco before with that, we're gonna have more than just obviously tacos. Um, like tortas, which is like the street food in in Mexico. So it's gonna be lighter, bright food, fresh. Um, you know, paired hopefully with margaritas and we'll have some tapier as well, but.
Might have to get another shirt that says sign, sign.
Yeah, sign names. That's why we left that.
I don't, I don't mean to make light of it, but so.
So one, one, yeah, one question that came up in the past with some of these other businesses was ample parking. Um, do we have uh, like a a number of max capacity for the restaurant and the corresponding parking for either onsite or on the on the city street?
Right. I mean, I don't think there's any place in town that has that, but we have max of a hundred in 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 the building. Um, that's super high end. It's gonna be, it's gonna be more like sixty-five inside. And then the patio has additional sixty-five. So um, you know, parking, like I said, when we set up here five and a half years ago, that was the main thing that we talked about. There is no additional parking in town. This, you know, maybe the city should maybe start looking at that, but you know, obviously the town's busy, right? Which is a good thing. Um, when we put in main streets, that was, like I said, five and a half years ago, that was the main topic of conversation. I feel like it's kind of worked out. Um, if we've talked to local business owners, they're, you know, obviously excited about this some and um, so the the parking that we can put on the site is what's what's in that rendering right there. Yeah, so we are keeping parking on onsite too, just so everybody knows. Um, we have, I believe, eight, is it nine?
Nine.
Nine spots in the front there and then uh, two additional spots on back there for employee parking as well. So we're trying to do our best to maximize what we have to try to keep parking, you know, as a obvious concern for everybody as well. So.
Long as the employees don't use them all.
Well, and speaking of that too, um, we're gonna, during the busy summer months, you know, we're gonna instruct our staff, obviously to park either at main street or down the road, you know, where there's parking down by uh, Ace Hardware. Um, we're looking into, you know, maybe some bikes or electric scooters to help transport. I mean, we're gonna try to do our best to make sure we're not, you know, pushing people down that end for employee parking especially. Um, and then uh, we did work out as a a deal with uh, the Dairy Queen owners, Sean and his wife. They're gonna let us use their Dairy Queen spots in their off season too. So when it's snowy out, obviously you can't use a scooter in the snow. So it's gonna be a little hard. So he's uh, more than willing to work with us in that capacity too. So he was, he was helpful in that regard.
Oh, we come up with the same discussion every time that there's a new business going in downtown and that's parking. Um, we can't control it. I mean, that that's part of the, that's part of the zoning. Business retail businesses have not, most of them have no party. They're one or two stalls. So I mean, it's the same discussion all the time, but then, you know, and I'm I'm on the outside looking in on this too. I've just been reading lately that there's there's people that think there's way too many people in this one now. So it's a uh, this is gonna bring more people. So it's.
Which is a good thing. You know, we always look at like the handful of days that are the craziest and I do that at Ernie's, right? And Mike at main street, we focus on those fifty, sixty days where it's insane, but then there's also three hundred days where, I mean, there's plenty of parking right now in town and and, you know, really anytime, even in July after five o'clock. Where dinner rush, there's, there's a lot of parking towards that end. So um, just obviously on the road and then the eight, ten, but whatever spots that we're gonna create. So um, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of year round people up here, you know, and they they having the option of another another place to go is good. So.
Uh, one more question I had was, so there was a gas station here at one point. Uh, when I drove by there, do they wear the gas tanks? Or have they been removed?
Uh, yes, they have it. Yep.
Okay, I just, we just had property in the past where we had to take major mitigation efforts, but we were close to lake shore to remove those and make sure that there was no seepage into the into the groundwater.
Right. So they they removed the tanks and they did the EPA testing for sure. Um, so I mean, we haven't heard anything back. So I'm, that's u- u- usually a good thing.
Yeah, we we can't.
But yeah. But yeah, we're not gonna close on on that property until that's.
It's through the state, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's controlled through them. Right, right.
I was amazed how many tanks and the size of them in that little.
They were big.
Yeah, I I did a site visit on about three or four days ago and there were four or five semi trucks there with these tanks sitting on them. They were out of the ground at this point. I mean, that's, I thought. Where in the world did they find place to put all those in there? But were no holes in them.
Do you guys anticipate doing uh, catering out of here? I mean, is that a big part of the main street business or?
No, we um, we actually shy away from catering to, to be honest with you. Um, just we we want to focus on the the in restaurant people, to be honest with you. Um,
Got it.
So we don't foresee any any catering. You know, there's gonna be some to go food. You know, of course, like every other restaurant, but um, as far as that goes, it's gonna be mostly, you know, in dining and to go food. So.
Yeah.
Dave, did you have any questions? I, when we were reading through the packet, there was some concerns that you had with the application. So did you have anything to address?
I guess uh, not necessarily concerns, but more questions just about uh, some of the parking that's already been brought up. It is what it is there. Uh, given the site area that you have to work with. Um, so that was a question whether the on street or on property. You've answered that question. It's gonna be on properties. Um, other questions would be like the uh, sewer and water supply for the business. It'll be city sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you know, that'll be a change in use there, which typically requires, you know, from a gas station to a restaurant. Which really is a change and water usage and all of that. So there should, you know, our recommendation to the city would be that that sack whack review be done. Which is typically.
I think we went through that with main street. So, but yeah, yeah.
Um, existing well still gonna be used.
I believe so, yes.
Yep, okay, so. Um, and then site drainage, got the drainage calculations. Again, not a lot of room to, you know, that'd be a challenging thing to deal with there. Oh, you've got some site storage on site and then that would go offsite from there. Um, so I think the goal from the city is try to retain as much as you can onsite before it leaves the site.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, the only comment to be made in our report was again, just how that leaves the site and your walkways and so forth. We do get ice, believe it or not.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we're well aware in front of Ernie's. Yeah.
Things like.
Chipping that away daily. Yeah.
So um, just just comments more to try to be helpful in that direction than being critical.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Yeah, I I think we we hired High Tech who did main street and they've done obviously a lot of a lot of businesses in town, built a lot of things in town. So I feel like we hired the right guys to handle the job here.
And then uh, exterior lighting. Yeah, lighting.
We don't really have a plan yet, but I'm sure we can you can speak to that.
Yeah, maybe. So uh, where we're at this point, um, with the design of the building is there's gonna be an outdoor patio that'll have some lighting on it where the goal is to have everything to be downlit. The uh, moon sign that's gonna be out there is going to be internally lit, but we discussed as of late. So we're gonna take measures and then the wall uh, wall lighting will be downlit if anything. So we'll in other municipalities we've worked with, you know, uplighting is, you know, uh, her is usually a topic of concern, but we'll take measures to make sure that nothing is.
Okay, I think that's well covered in the ordinance. So.
Yep, we're good.
You know, if you adhere to that, you're good to go. But uh, thought it was worth bringing up. So we have an understanding what you're proposing.
Um, Andy, well, let's go. Then I work for High Tech.
Bethany, I have one more question about when it comes back to parking.
Yes.
Uh, the parking area that's back there for the trail.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that limited to trail users or is that open to public parking for down for?
The D and R parking lot? Yes, that is just for trail users and that is owned by the state of Minnesota.
Right. And then the surrounding land around that where the boat storage units are also privately held, which.
Correct.
Immediate option for parking. However, spending. So. I don't have any more questions myself. See the motion.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion and I think it'd be cool if it came from the right hand side.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You can help me through with these questions. I can tell you that.
Well, the uh.
No questions.
So you can just make a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Findings and facts have been prepared by city staff.
That makes it easy. So I'll make a motion to approve. Based on the facts and findings and.
Fact conditions?
Yeah, exactly.
My second.
Second. Or was there?
There was a Danny second. Okay. Good. All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, next item is conditional use application zero two three dash two three to obtain a conditional use permit for the construction operation of a warehouse storage structure within the highway business zoning district. The subject property is located at to be determined lower Roy Lake Road PID two eight one four zero five four one owner applicant Dan and Susan Kuhn. Bethany, your staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit as required per land use table twenty dash four five for the construction of a fifty by seventy foot commercial building to operate a warehouse storage related business in the highway business district. The applicant proposes that the structure will be used for an established businesses. Dance Ovation Challenge and Music General for the storage and warehousing of equipment and goods. No employees will be at this location, owner and deliveries only. The applicant does not propose to be open for customer driven traffic. And the proposed business will be served by city sewer and private well.
All right, if you'd like to make public comment regarding this project, please step towards the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Dan Hune. Um, basically said it all. We want to, wanna build a warehouse for uh, an overflow of equipment and uh, vehicles from the music general. Uh, we have another company called Ovation Dance and it has really no place to put its uh, equipment that you use, it it's used seasonally. So mo- the majority of the things will be in that warehouse will be there um, long term, months at a time. And and when we take it out of there, then the it'll be on the truck for period of time, but uh, it's mostly long term storage for us.
Okay, I just hold on. I I just wanted to give an opportunity to the people in the audience to give public comment, but that's okay. We can do it right now. Okay, being none, then I can close public comments. So we're fine. I just needed to get that formality out of the way. Um, questions? Do we have any questions? We kind of touched on this. We we're we're the project. We're out there. We why I was um, to kind of look, look, look where it is and it's a vicinity from uh, Copper Creek. Is it uh, huh? It should be right on the corner there.
Essentially right across the street.
That's what I thought. Okay.
You were in to see us some month or so ago.
Yeah, we we had that discussion when we uh,
Right, right.
When you approved the the change from residential to commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions from Sean or Danny?
I do not have.
Excuse me, I did. Um, however, I do not have my exact note. It was just in regards to the signage that was gonna be put out in front of this. Last time I remember you gentlemen coming in here, there was a desire to put signage out there.
There's no, no signage.
It was just a discussion.
The way it'll be.
Okay, got it. That's what I thought. I just wasn't exactly sure because we had that thirty minute interlude with no.
Oh, I remember.
Video and audio and we had an audio and video guy here.
And I don't time that. So. We remember that. That would come back up.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have no other questions. Okay.
Gary?
No questions.
Dave?
We had some comments for your consideration. More comments than questions. We had some comments for your consideration or comments than questions and.
Okay. Well, if there are no other comments, questions, I will consider a motion.
We have to go through the questionnaire?
No.
All right, I'll grab this one. All right, I was vote to approve uh conditional use application zero two three dash two three to obtain a conditional use permit for the construction. And operation of a warehouse stored structure within the highway business zoning district.
With the staff recommendations and findings of fact.
Recommendations and findings.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. All is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
All right, next item is conditional use application zero two four dash two three to obtain a conditional use permit for a transient merchant park in the highway business zoning district. The subject property is located at two four seven three zero Hazelwood Drive, PAD two eight one four zero six zero nine, applicant owner Copper Creek Landscaping LLC.
Hi, I'm Nikki Holst and I'm the director of retail at Copper Creek and I'm here on behalf of Copper Creek tonight. Joe is with his son at a football game, so I'm here on his behalf.
Thank you. Bethany, your staff report.
The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit as required per chapter eight article uh. Is that four? Peddlers, canvassers and transient merchants, section eight, one thirty five transient merchant park permit, park operation requirements. In your packet, I did print that out. That is in um chapter eight of our land use ordinance, and so that's not something that we usually deal with.
Right.
Um for the planning commission. So I did print out that full portion. You can notice in the first, um I believe it's the very first. Portion of it, it does say that a conditional use permit is required if ten or more. Um just want to remind the planning commission that as a allowed use, this is not a matter of whether we will allow it or not. Um it isn't allowed use. We must approve this permit, but the conditions um. Can be changed, added to as you wish this evening. Um I know that there was some um interest in making sure that certain parking parameters and whatnot were met. So. Um that is what we are here to discuss this evening.
Right. If, uh hold on, if you'd like to make public comment regarding this project, please step towards the podium and state your name and address. Here in none, I'll close public comments. All right, if you want to just briefly touch on what the project's gonna be and.
Yeah, um we have our fall festival days between now and um well, actually not now, September fifteenth through. Um the middle of October and on those weekends, there are a few. Um maybe each weekend two different food trucks and a handful of mostly local um artisans or people that work from home on some sort of craft that will be coming and setting up a. Small twelve by twelve tent and selling their items. Um we have a couple. Um food trucks that will come in. One is ice cream, one is um like burgers, kind of your normal fair food. So. Um that's just kind of a sampling of what is coming. Um they're different each weekend. Um they're not the same. We don't have any that are consistently here for every weekend. They will be parking on our property and um. Yeah, just there during the weekend hours, so.
Okay, any questions?
Uh probably just more so relaying some of the concerns that were passed through via email that were received uh to our zoning admin. Um. We do have two and I believe it was capped at two. Is that right, Bethany?
For two, there was also an additional one that you received today. I did send an email, but I printed a copy. You should all have a hard paper copy in front of you today.
And that is from MN DOT. Um a lot of this is really based off of volume of traffic, volume of parking.
Yeah.
Um we understand where this is obviously zoned, commercial business, get that. I think that with understanding and uh consideration for the neighbors that are around their operation of this sort of events. Being it's a conditional use permit, um looking to try to get uh. Trying to get this pushed through while considering those that live there full time.
For sure.
As data is taken in full consideration and the business owner is also a city council member, fellow city council member for this town. Um I think he is more than aware of the recourse from having any sort of complaints come through detriment to his actual business of a landscape company. So.
Right.
Um I for one love seeing uh our small businesses and our small town host events like this. It builds more community within our already beloved community. So. Uh some of these concerns or I would say blow blown complaints were. Definitely understood, but uh I think as long as Mr. Hall and yourself and the rest of your staff are. Being as considerate as possible to those that are around the business that are not zoned, what you all are.
Yeah.
Um I don't think I have any other questions that would warrant me to. Be against us, so thank you.
Yeah, if I might just address, we we have a lower yard area that usually is used for truck traffic. And so this year we are planning to structure that yard to accommodate as much parking as possible, even. Designating in that um like on the back end of where the food trucks are, where it says yard.
On the north side of the property.
Yep, right off of three seventy one there. Um so we are planning to pre-mark that so that. We can fit as many cars in there as possible. And then also we've asked permission from Christ Community Church to use their parking lot and will be directing people there as well.
That was a suggestion I was gonna make next.
Yes, so we we have, and that is on our website, that will, there will be signs at their entrances and ours. Um and just kind of staff to help direct them in that direction, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How long has the fall festival days, how long has that been going on?
Last year was our first attempt at that and so we're we're learning and trying to perfect. Uh this year on some of the frustrations from last year, certainly. Um so yes, last year was our first go at that.
You you anticipate that it will be bigger as we go from year to year to year?
Um I would, I would hope we would at least maintain what we have. I guess um it's sort of yet to be seen if everybody enjoyed it as much as. As we thought they did. So um that is the hope that we would get the same number of people, if not more, returning.
You know, when I was going, there's a quite a bit of paper involved with this application that we've had to go through. Uh when it comes down to the type of vendors, you're talking like these are gonna be crafts, crafts people. Uh I saw something someplace and now I can't find it that talked about farmer's market. Uh was there a plan that this was gonna be a farmer's market? And if that's the case, I was wondering what happened, you know, to the Legion.
I don't think that that was our intention and and so I'm not sure um if that says that somewhere that is.
I don't even know where I saw it, but I saw it in here someplace.
I think I know where you saw that, Gary. If um in the staff report, I did print off that article or in that section out of chapter eight. And it does talk about the farmer's market in that.
Oh, and something.
I just printed off the entire um portion on the ordinance for your reference. Um the farmer's market actually. Um is just the farmer's market, the American Legion, and that's the only one allowed in the central business district. So that's that.
Okay, I was curious if that if the American Legion was gonna stop doing that.
No, they're not.
We have more items like pottery or people that print shirts or things like that, not necessarily grown farmer's market items.
You know, one other item I was I went out and looked at it today and I was on the west side of the building, you know, along the street, Long Hazelwood.
Yes.
And there's a there's a stand of trees there and that's from the road, from the pavement over to the edge of the trees. And I'll direct this to Dave. Uh must be twenty twenty five feet of open, looks like ditch, but it's not. It's just kind of a depression. It's it's open. It's mowed grass in there. Um is there any possibility that the city would look at putting perpendicular parking stalls, but you know, along there, whether I don't know if that's all city property or if that's. Their property, you know, just.
I don't know.
I don't have.
Yeah, between us and.
Might have to respond to that.
The church.
At the moment.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Because if people are gonna park there anyway, well, they're gonna pull over in the ditch and they're gonna parallel park, which takes up. A whole lot more space than perpendicular parking, so.
Sure.
And now, if you mention it, watch, she'll be back next month on Joe's request before that.
Uh yeah.
They'll be watching this.
Yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah.
That that would be a comment that you should probably consider is a condition to the CUP would be. Whether or not parking on a public street would be allowed for this event. Hazelwood is the one I'm talking about in the the trail there.
Right, Hazelwood, yeah. Because that seems to be where the comments are coming from.
Yeah.
From the, you know, from the neighbors.
That would be in the in the realm of conditions that you might consider, you know. As a condition of the permit, parking on public streets.
Which is why I would even double down on that from Dave's point too uh with. Coordinated approach with with the local church there to be able to have that parking, to have access, because they're just gonna come around the south side to the main parking area past the maze anyway. So. I think I'm I'm sure Joe's probably working at it to get.
Yes.
Get that put in place.
Yes.
It just makes the most sense, especially with the bike trail now being there.
Correct.
Almost virtually all of Hazelwood Drive access, it's not gonna be feasible.
It's not gonna be the same for people this year, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
In addressing some of the concerns from the neighbors, I noticed that there is an hours of operation and it's uh it's like till five and then on Sundays it's till four. Is that being, was that strictly enforced last year?
Yes, yes, it is. This but like as a um. As a manager of my staff, it is strictly enforced because they're tired and they're given permission to close up at five o'clock. So that is, that is our goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Please come up here and. Say your name.
My name is Rod Beebe Houser at lower fifty fifty lower Roy Lake Road. With the advent of the new uh trail coming through there, is parking gonna be allowed on Hazelwood and or lower Roy Lake Road? As it has been on in the past. On their different events, they parked on the, not they, but their. Their customers have parked on both sides of the road, but now you have a trail on one side. So is parking allowed there or not?
No parking is permitted on the Galway uh bike trail, so.
Okay.
That side. Now, on the other half of the side, perhaps we can make this a condition for this application to be able to block off that essentially. Similar to what like the Brainerd J C's does for Nisswa area roads around Polen Day Bay during that fishing tournament.
Yeah.
They block that off. Perhaps that can be a consideration for this if the, what what was your concern? So.
So.
Parking.
The the parking uh on both sides of the road there.
Okay.
And and you're saying there's not gonna be on on the trail side?
Parking is not permitted on the Galway trail.
I understand on the trail, but on the trail side, is it?
No, there's.
Bethany, can you shed?
Yeah, as far as um the street parking, you could make a condition for this CUP um that prohibits all onsite or on street parking. And then thus requiring with the issuance of the CUP that the customers park either in the dedicated um at areas. Um that are set aside for parking or at the church as they've agreed.
Right.
And that is something that you can condition and then that would remove all of that um all of that doubt of those streets becoming congested.
Right.
Which because there's a three three way staff there as well now.
Correct.
Where there wasn't before. Is that correct?
There is.
Correct.
And I can see if they hydro seed along that trail, people parking on that, it's probably not gonna be, because they'll suck right up to that trail. They they will, yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll it'll wreck that.
Yeah.
This board can make a a condition for this request to be able to have that as well.
Any other comment?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So how we make a, so if we make a motion regarding the parking, how do we we haven't really handled the parking yet, have we?
Well, so you can make the motion and then as a condition, you can say that no public parking is allowed on the city streets, on on public streets. And that can be a condition. We can maybe can add as many conditions as we want, but that seems to be the consideration. How do you all feel about that?
What you have.
Well, I can, I guess what I would say my reaction would be is in the past, then people parked on three seventy one. So I feel some stress about that, about people choosing to park on the highway instead of. In town. Now, if it's on Hazelwood and it is impeding, I I don't want people to, I mean, we spend our. Days uh hydro seeding, so I certainly don't want to mess up the one along there either. And we would like that to look lovely as well. So. I think we would be open to that um just not putting people's safety.
Could or could we park on one side of the street and not the other?
Uh how much capacity does the church, the church parking lot have for cars?
That's a really great question. I I think it's somewhere around two hundred parking spots, but I am not, but I'm not certain.
But you're open on Sundays, which they'll need their parking on Sundays.
Um yes, however, we don't open until ten or eleven and they're um they're quite empty by that time, so.
Will you have some sort of parking attendant kind of directing people where they need to go?
We do have a staff person typically just kind of going back and forth between the two entrances and directing people on where on either heading down to that yard parking or the church, depending on which one is. More full or empty so that we can send people to the right spot. So.
Offering food to this extent is obviously gonna then drive more traffic and I think that's gonna be an emphasis of safety to to not be on three seventy one, to not be on city street.
Yeah.
During this time of year.
Yeah.
We could be having, you know, snow on the ground or not, so the trail could still be in use.
Correct. Um I we are hoping with the trail that we'll have a lot more people biking. Even even that to us this year, so and we don't know what that would be. We did have food trucks there last year, so um. I don't know that it will necessarily, that that would be the fluctuation in our numbers.
Sure.
So.
I think that would be my only recommendation was that it would be with the consideration of not parking on.
Mm hmm.
Public streets or right of ways. Which means further double down with the the church.
Mm hmm, right, yeah.
So I have this, I'm ignorant of how how this works when we when we have city events, but at what level is police presence required?
This would not be a city event. Um this does not take place on city property at all. And so there is one permit that they do need. When they do the hayrides that go up and down Hazelwood, they do need to seek an a a permit for street use. They have submitted an application for that, so they are um seeking that as well. Um but as far as this is not a city event, this is a private event on um a commercial property. I have highlighted all the areas that they've talked about for parking, uh just to give you physical or a visual representation, so.
And on the pass too, so they did the horse and bar, they loaded the horse and buggy or tractor where the now the trail is.
Yes, that will now be inside our fenced area.
And so they go up and down that road.
Correct, down to the Nisswa like access and back.
I'm just trying to think how wide that road is. If you had people parking, that'd be one lane.
David, have you got any idea of uh what Mindot's uh philosophy is on parking on Mindot along state highways like that? I know the city events, they parked along there for a mile, you know, and it's kind of dangerous, but.
Yeah.
No, I don't know if Mindot has got a rule against it or they just don't enforce it or what?
It's a a planned event that then generates uh signage and congestion, signage and things like that when you have. Something of that magnitude so that it gives more of a fair warning and in it being.
so that it gives more of a fair warning and, and it begins. So that's, that's kind of the way Mindot handles that, otherwise they're not, they'll probably tag a vehicle.
But you, you had parking on the highway last year, right?
Yes, and they did come and just talk to us about it and said that it wouldn't be something that they would come and direct, it's just nice for them to know that it's happening, so they, they weren't going to.
So they're kind of allowing it then?
Yeah.
Sorry, Mindot did provide comment, so there is comment from Mindot.
When it, when it comes to parking, it's more of a policy than a, a regulation on public streets. Generally, they're rural designed roads and people do park along the edges, um, and it's not prohibited, generally speaking.
I just thought because it's Mindot property, you know, all different, could be all different world than, you know, some county and streets.
Some places it would be, but, um, this is going, you know, directly to a CUP application particular event that you have the opportunity to think about placing a condition on, uh, to address the concerns that have been raised by some of the residents and protection of the trail and, and that sort of thing, so. You know, for the duration of this event, you could place a condition on it that they should have their patrons park within, within the property.
When you had the event last year, what do you think the average number of cars were present? Do we have an estimation on that?
I can't say that I do, because I was busy on property with people. I didn't have the option to look on Hazelwood to see what kind of congestion was there other than driving the, uh, hayride a few times on that road and I think there was a question of if it was left one lane, and I do know that when I was driving there, people were able to pass me stuff to get around, so I don't, I can't comment on the number of cars. Our, our parking lots were usually full and some cars I know overflowed into the church parking lot, so.
Yeah, cause I know I went by there and there was a lot of cars, but see they would, they would kind of go up on the hill where the trail now is along there, or they'd suck into the grass of the Town Home Association is. Heading west or whatever from the property.
Oh, well, I mean, just looking at the aerial, it seems like the, the church parking lot is
Yeah.
relatively close. So.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, maybe just some event signage that says event parking, directing folks to their arrangements that you.
That can be a condition with the church.
That is, that is in the works for this year, yes. It will be less headache for us as well.
If there is a condition on this, that there was no on-street parking on Hazelwood and Lower Roy Lake Road, uh, would that, those roads have to be signed, I would assume?
Yeah.
You know, for, for this event? Does, does the city do that, or does Copper Creek do that, or? Anybody know? You know, you, you know, we can say that there's no parking there, that doesn't mean people aren't gonna park there. If there isn't a sign that says you can't park here, they.
If, if it would be a condition of this being approved, then it would be at the responsibility of the applicant to then be directing traffic to the designated parking area that they have then decided, which by the discussions of this, sounds like the church.
Yeah.
Which, by all theories, is your best bet.
Yeah, your yard there is gonna probably provide about twenty, twenty stalls or two or twenty or thirty, I would think.
Yeah, oh yeah, at least. We probably have twenty staff vehicles there on a normal basis, so we would be adding quite a lot beyond that.
Okay.
Alright, okay, take a swing at this one.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the condition use permit application zero two four dash two three to obtain a con- conditional use permit for transient merchant park in the Highway Business Zoning District, which is Copper Creek. With the condition that there is no on-street parking and that you would mark the parking so that it shows that there is no parking on the street, or have someone designated them to park in the designated parking areas, which would be the church and your site.
That would be condition number three? There's two, two conditions in the staff report already, so.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, so that'd be number three, I guess.
So that would be number three.
You wanna specify which roads? It's gonna say all public streets.
Only two.
I'd say all public streets. Yeah, I mean, that'd be.
You just said no on-street parking, so.
City streets plus right of way.
There you go.
Which includes the aforementioned Galway Trail. Second it. All those in favor? Aye, all those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next item is an ordinance amendment zero two five dash two three to adopt an ordinance amendment modifying chapter twenty, section twenty dash five thirty-two pets and livestock regarding the keeping of chickens in the urban residential zoning district. Bethany, your staff report.
Yes, thank you. Um, at the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting, Bernita Morse presented information to the council and requested that they revise the ordinance to allow for the keeping of chickens in the city of Nisswa. City council recommend that the planning commission look into this request and consider any changes that would allow for restricted use in the keeping of chickens. Per city council's request at the August first planning commission meeting, the planning commission discussed gathering information from other municipalities that allow chickens and worked towards formulating an ordinance amendment for the city of Nisswa. The attached information in the packet was gathered from area cities and the resulting proposed ordinance amendment is being proposed by city staff. Uh, the planning commission may review, revise as needed and recommend either the approval or denial of this ordinance amendment to city council this evening, or you can review and request changes or additional information to discuss and determine at a, our October meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I now personally know many people that are very excited about this. It's a great work, young lady.
And we talked about this last month as well, about whether, you know, revising our ordinance is changing the ordinance to allow chickens everywhere or acting as a conditional use permit on a singular basis, you know, individual basis. We've done that before. I think the previous one was Holly Holm. Um, can we re- pressure ourselves on?
Yeah, un- unfortunately, um, that variance, um, should not have been granted, and so when we have land use table and somebody wants a variance for something that's not an allowed use, they need to rezone to a zoning that has that as an allowed use. Um, the variance would come into play if, for example, somebody wanted eight chickens instead of seven. But we would need to, um, make sure that that is an allowed use per the land use table.
So that was a variance change, it was a variance that wasn't a conditional use.
Right, and so we could do the permitting process. Um, what I have proposed is that there are actually no permits required for the keeping of chickens. There are, however, permits required for the coop, for the run. Um, but the actual keepings of the chickens, as long as they abide by the rules set forth here. And what that allows for is, uh, they're still in the ordinance, if somebody does not follow this, we can require them, um, to remove the chickens from their property until they can meet these, uh, performance standards.
Yeah, do we have any more comments from Bernita? You don't have to, it's okay. There she goes. Just tapping about, there you go.
She, she's wondering what the ordinance would look like, what the proposal. The proposed, yep, it is in the packet online, um, and I'll just go ahead and read through that if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Um, chickens, um, this would be under section twenty dash five three two pets and livestock chickens. The keeping of chickens may be allowed in residential districts, urban residential, shoreline residential and Linden residential, provided that the following performance standards are met. The minimum lot size for the keeping of chickens is thirty thousand square feet. We found it would be very beneficial to make sure that these lots were adequately sized to meet the needs of keeping chickens. Uh, no more than seven hen chickens shall be allowed, roosters are prohibited. We went with seven chickens based on the recommendation of Bernita Morse. Uh, chickens must be kept confined on the residential parcel at all times in a chicken coop or chicken run. The chickens must be secured in a chicken coop from sunset to sunrise each day. Uh, chicken coops and runs require a permit and must meet the following standards. A, the coops and runs must be located in the rear yard or side yard. Screening is required for all coops and runs located in the side yard. Uh, coops and runs are not allowed in the shoreline impact zone. Um, the screening on the side yard, um, that would be important, let's say if somebody that was on a lake wanted to keep chickens, but they needed to put it in the rear, well, what's the rear? Is that lakeside or whatnot? And if we don't allow it in S I Z, then I wanna be able to give them adequate space to keep chickens. However, let's, um, screen it to make sure that the view from the road or the neighbors, uh, would be taken care of. Uh, coops and runs must maintain a minimum thirty foot setback from any adjacent property and must not be located in a residential structure, including porches, garages and sheds. Basically, this means you cannot take an already existing porch and add a chicken coop to it. Um, we need to have a dedicated chicken coop for those. Also, the increased setbacks would allow for just a little bit more of a buffer between any neighboring, uh, residential residences. Uh, the coop shall be elevated or rodent proof, so generally speaking, you wanna elevate a coop so that rodents can't get in, though rodents will get in, so it's really great if you can rodent proof your chicken coop as well. Uh, must be a minimum of four square feet per chicken in size, must not exceed ten square feet per chicken in size, and must not exceed eight feet in height. This basically gives enough room to adequately and safely keep chickens for the health of the chickens, but not only, um, for that, but for, um, that you have enough room to keep them and that they're not too big, these chicken coops. We don't want large structures on the properties. The attached fenced-in runs must not exceed twenty square feet per chicken and six feet in height. Chicken runs may be enclosed with wood and or welded wire materials. Uh, the chicken feed needs to be kept in rodent-proof containers. Accumulation of animal waste or manure shall not be allowed and animal husbandry is prohibited. That means that you cannot raise meat birds. You cannot, um, do, um, those items where you breed the animal, uh, for future use.
Sounds pretty complicated, young lady. I'm sure that you're gonna have people that will help you with that, but.
Um, Bethany, I have a question about the minimum lot size requirement.
Yes.
You came to thirty thousand square feet, so that's what roughly point seven acres? About, yeah, about.
About, but I make a habit of not doing public math, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's over half an acre, um, for sure, but it's, uh, not necessarily quite an acre.
Why did you come to thirty thousand square feet exactly? I mean, why is point seven acres the magical number? I'm just wondering.
It's not a magical number, it's just that both Baxter and Brainerd have that provision, and I thought that that was very sensible.
There's bases for it.
Yeah, it just ensures that there's not a really small lot trying to put chickens on. Yeah.
Okay.
And that would be something that somebody could seek a variance. And that would be a situation where if somebody came in and said, you know what, due to this unique property of, you know, or uniqueness of my property, I still think of chickens would be allowed, and then we can look at those per case, um, and allow that as needed.
Any other questions?
What is like the average lot size, like in the city of Nisswa?
Wow, that's a good question. I did go and make sure that Bernita's was, was meeting the, the, the size that was necessary for this, so. Most lots, I'm just gonna pull the G I S up again and you can just take a look at that really quickly.
Somebody, someone of that is gonna be skewed by commercial property, so residential lots is kind of what I think your question is.
I would think that they're more half-acre lots, when aren't they in most cities?
We'll just go ahead and measure, I don't wanna click on any of them, but for example, this one right here. That is fifty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three, whereas this small lot right here would be just barely twenty thousand. So that small lot, they would need a variance to keep chickens, this lot would not. Just for comparison purposes.
Okay.
Can we not go smaller? Can we pick the number twenty?
You can pick any number you like.
Yeah, you can make any motion run. Well, if there's half acre, could make a half acre? Can you, do you need a, do you need it to be square footage, or does it need to be acreage?
Either one.
Okay. Well, I'll take a motion from anywhere, doesn't matter.
Are you looking at me?
Well, I'm, somebody needs to take a motion, okay. Gary's got it.
Well, I, I technically can't. I'll move, uh, a move or move that we recommended the city council of Nisswa to adopt an ordinance amending, or ordinance amendment zero two five dash two three to adopt an ordinance amending, modifying chapter twenty, section twenty dash five three two pets and livestock. According, regarding the the, the keeping of chickens in the urban residential zoning district. Um, and this would be all according to the language that has been produced, that, that's been presented by the staff and the staff report. Uh, with the exception of number one minimum lot size for keeping of chickens is be changed from thirty thousand square feet to point, zero point five acres.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries.
Nice job, Bernita.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is old business variance application zero two zero dash two three that was tabled from the previous, uh, August first, two thousand twenty-three meeting to obtain a variance for the after-the-fact construction of a thirty by sixteen pavilion, not meeting the lot line setbacks within the shoreline residential zoning district. The subject property is located at five nine two five Nashway Road, P I D two eight three six zero five seven three. Applicant Michael and Jethro Carpenter, owner Michael J Carpenter Trust. The owner applicant, please come forward. Okay, Bethany.
Uh, thank you. Uh, at the August first, two thousand twenty-three planning commission meeting, the planning commission tabled after-the-fact variance request zero two zero dash three two or two three, requesting a sixteen by thirty-foot pavilion struck, constructed four point zero one feet from the side lot line, pending further information concerning correspondence. between the applicant and then city planner Brittany Cotner. An email dated seven twenty-four, two thousand nineteen between Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Cotner has been provided detailing the discussion of the pavilion. I found no further emails regarding this issue.
Can you review what 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 transpired in the last meeting to get us to the table?
Yes, so at our last meeting, we had a variance request for a patio that was denied. This was tabled. I did include the staff report in your packet from the last meeting, so you do have all the information there. The answers, the findings of fact as provided by the applicant are there. The questions that will need to be answered tonight are also included in there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So at the last meeting, there was a vote to deny the motion. That did not deny the act, we just denied the motion to ask.
Correct, yep, motion was proposed to approve and it did not pass. So it was tabled further information. The information as presented in the email dated from the July twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen does show that the applicant asked if that would be able to be done or if a permit would be required, or if it would even be an allowed use. Brittany Cotner at the time did specify that it would not be allowed, and it would be classified as an expansion of a nonconforming structure.
Okay. So in our last meeting, we had three noes and two yeses. We're missing John tonight, so if we would go to an impasse again, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for Gary, how it would go. He would have to break the tie. Jesse would have to. Now, if I recall, the last time you had some reservations about some documentation.
Right.
You were able to read through the packet, do you have any further questions?
No, I think is what I was after is I wanted to to get some, he was saying that there was emails and that Brittany, the the prior planning administrator said that you could go ahead and do that there wasn't a problem, like you needed a permit or.
So it was a surprise as much as me probably as you guys, right? So I do a bride of communication, right? So I called last week because I was just wondering Brittany was out at the property multiple times. Been seen in our construction. So I see an email, it went and Brittany sent, I'm sorry, Bethany sent it, I'm like really seems fairly obvious to me that I screwed up, right? Um, if I was going to try to do some sly type of deal, I can assure you, I wouldn't email. But in fact, matters, I goofed up, that's it. Not much else to say, I guess, I don't know where besides that I I don't really see a benefit, so we obviously we're gonna comply with whatever gets decided. There's really no I don't see huge benefit for moving it, in fact, it's going to be more of instead of being more screened for the lake, it's going to be more visible. The purbius is gonna stay the same because there is a patio near it, so there is no real. It hasn't caused any sort of erosion issues or any impact or whatever, so I don't really feel that there's a a logical reason. And then on top of it is we've had different projects in the past where we've bought property, split it up, and there's a nonconforming structure. But they, part of the conditions where if that structure ever gets damaged beyond fifty percent or whatever, according to state statute has to be removed, so I feel like at some point in time, it's going to work its way out, but again, like I whatever happens, we're gonna move it, or we're going to try to resolve it, or I guess, I just don't really feel it. It's of any huge valid or value to move the thing to some places more intrusive. Creates a whole bunch more work, and the direct neighbor that was impacted from it came and spoke in favor of it, which is even probably more surprised to me because they're really I I didn't even talk to him about the deal at all, they came on their own behalf with without even saying anything to us, so. That's it, I really don't have anything besides, if you guys don't have any questions, some, but email is what it is, I obviously I didn't reply, so I didn't see it, you know, like tons of emails. And you'll see through, I don't know, Bethany, I've probably seen it, but we had multiple permits and different stuff that we applied for in addition, a pole building. Asked about fences and stuff, so I make an effort to reach out and always respond, apparently not on this one, but that's it. Nothing else unless you guys have a question, but yeah, goofed up, that's that.
The the problem I see with it is is the fact that if we were to grant it to you, it sets a precedence to everybody else, so that.
Yeah, I I completely understand my my reservation is is it variances are something that are on a case by case basis, and I completely understand that. But I think that's the reason that I'm asking for a variance is because it's apparent that it's it didn't go perfectly, right, you know?
I need to interject something at this point, I was the one that made the motion at the last meeting to approve your variance and one of the positive votes on it. The reason that I did that is that during our discussions, you had talked about the many times that you and Brittany had talked about this project. And it was, I had the impression from you that she had said it was almost okay to go ahead without permitting, which, you know, obviously, when this email shows up, that's wrong. And so from my point of view, I would not, I would not make a mo- a motion to approve this again because of that one thing. It also appears that the original garage was not permitted, is that correct? I that there was a history of permitting there, and I didn't see where the garage was.
The garage itself is a is an existing, it.
I know it was existing, but it wasn't permitted originally.
I don't have any any history on that, so it's a legal existing nonconformity.
But yeah, I don't blame you guys, if you guys vote the amount, I completely understand, I'm not and I didn't. I I can, whether or not any of you, whatever you guys think or believe or whatnot, I I can tell you that I wouldn't I I wouldn't have an email traffic or something that I was going to rightfully go and try to try to get past, right? I mean, the thing's there, right? It's a little, it's a little late after deal is done, but I emailed because I had a question, right? You know, apparently I missed it, but that's the only logical thing that I can come up with, but not always right. Really accept the fact that that and if you guys don't pass it, I completely understand it, you know, it it's pretty apparent that I did not follow up with the deal, I just don't really see the benefit of moving it, but we will for sure, and I fully respect Mr. Harris's deal, like I, I don't blame you for or the deal at all, but I I can tell you that I had tons of conversations with Brittany, not over just that particular deal. There's multiple things, built a pole barn, we put an addition on the place, we landscaped it, I mean, there's put a boathouse, and there's just multiple things, right? And so that's, that would be the reason, but anyways.
What you've done out there looks nice overall, you know, and I'm sure the neighbors are happy with it compared to what it used to be. But it still comes down to a point that you just can't, we just can't be out building things without permits and without any control on it. And I I think that's, you know, the if this was a small patio with a small pergola, you know, pergola, what you think about is you got it for eight by ten or eight by twelve, and you got some four by fours holding up some some and the joist, this is not bad.
Even you shouldn't hear about building a little pergola with a little roof over to cover the.
Yeah, it's it's not, that's that's an understatement for what this is. You know, but and when you, if you end up moving it and rebuilding it, it's half gonna be done under under the under the permit, you know, with.
Yeah, obviously, it's gonna have to be a little bit every six feet, that's we have to do, right? So.
I think you know, you you've been here enough, I mean, we've worked on many, many things with you and say you're landscaping contractor, yeah, you're also a developer. You understand our ordinances sometimes quicker than we're able to dissect it ourselves as we make any revisions to it. We try to hold ourselves to a high standard, so we hold those that come in our community to as equal standard. Gary's absolutely right, and so is Sean. This this precedence, especially with an email like that come through, that is black and white. If we would have had that before, and I was not here at that meeting, I understand. However, I think that that would have been denied immediately. And I think that now there's a little different taste and opinion on it, and it's refreshing to hear, you know, anybody that will would step up and say it was a mistake, we shouldn't have done that. And you're obviously accepting that there's any ramifications to an outcome on this. If they, if they get to a vote where it's unanimous, or it's tied since Gary's not here, I think that, you know, there should be no further analysis that needs to be done on it. I think that the facts have been.
Are are the options here, Bethany? The options would be for us to go through and approve or deny the application? Or could Mr. Carpenter?
You you would need to either approve or deny this application.
Could he propose a request and just not go through that?
A portion of it has of the application has already been denied. We would just need to go through those questions and and you can do a vote.
Okay.
But the questions will need to be answered, you can do the questions before passing the motion, though. So you can go through the facts of findings prior to hearing a motion.
Right, well, we did that last time, so. If if if, so if we go through each question, it's my understanding that if any of those questions is a no, that's a no.
That's the end of it, then.
So would you need to still go through those other questions if there was?
Our attorney would recommend that we provide a full findings of fact.
Okay.
Hey. Is that the end of the discussion?
If is there any more comments? Public comment? What's that? Nothing, no. I could ask for, is there, is it customary to ask if, I mean, if we're not in a public meeting? I mean, it's a good, it's a good policy not to or to to have public comment again? Oh, that's right. Or is it required, so?
It's not required, no, and so the public hearing has already been held for this, so it's not a requirement of this application at this time.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll need a motion to deny with the findings of fact, if that's what.
So the questions first or no?
Well, whoever makes a motion has to go through the questions. Correct?
You can go to the questions.
You'll get to the first one. And if it's a no, then okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance application zero two zero dash twenty-three to obtain, excuse me, to obtain a variance for the after the fact construction with thirty by twenty sixteen pavilion not meeting lot line setbacks with the shoreline residential zoning district. The subject property is at five nine two five Nashway Road.
A second to motion?
You'll need to go through the first question, which is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. In your packet, it is supplied, you can just circle. It is or it is not, and then you just need to put a reason why.
Okay. Let me answer, so I post something out, is not in harmony. The screening effect could have been obtained with less mass of construction of wall and roof and with permitting, the lakeside patio could have been constructed according to this, to the size of two hundred square feet as it was permitted and at a twenty foot setback to the O H W.
You only need to speak on the pavilion for this one, the other one has already been denied.
Oh, okay.
The patio.
Strike the last sentence on that. That work or not?
Next question.
Okay, now we have to go to question.
Number two.
The next one on the series.
Is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan? I think that's yes. Because it does, we're not talking about permitting in the comprehensive plan, we're talking about the type of structure that can be built, and I think that was yes.
I would agree. Sean and Danny?
Agree, agree.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we got them in the first, in the first question for denial.
Yeah, we don't, we didn't vote.
You want that, I'm assuming. So on his first question for the motion. Okay, he is is not, but I did not get a a collective yes or no, as we did with the other ones.
Jump, we jumped ahead too quick there.
I agree with.
Let me re- repeat it?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, next question.
Number two, is the variance consistent, or I'm sorry, number three, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the city in this what code of ordinance? Again, I'd have to say yes at that because they'd use it for their own personal use for their enjoyment of the property and and access.
I agree, yes.
Number four. Is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner? When I'd have to say is not. The existing garage was all, I thought that was done without permit, but that was a pre-existing nonconforming.
The original garage was, yeah, existing with the property.
And the pavilion was not not permitted prior to construction. You agree?
Yes, agree.
Will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality? I I I think it it will. Neighbors approve the pavilion, it probably, it looks like it fits with the neighborhood, and I don't see a problem with that.
Agree, agree.
Number six, does the need for variance involve more than economic considerations? I'd say at this point it does not. Just simply, simply for the fact that and to come up with the right, right, right reasoning here. Or is that? Because permitting permitting this particular construction is is gonna require an expensive move. And obviously, that if if it was, I I think if we're talking about a minor minor move of a of a minor construction project, a small patio, a small pergola, we wouldn't be going through a lot of this today. Is that too ambiguous?
Yeah, we won't be fighting it, so I don't, I don't want to cut it, but yeah.
Damn.
Agree, agree.
That's number six. Number seven was any other pertinent findings, and there are are none at this point.
Yeah. At that. Yeah, all those in favor?
Hi.
I'll abstain. Good. All right.
Yeah, no, um, before I walked out the last time, right? So like what's the timeframe, like, we obviously have to move it, I don't know, is that something we have to figure out right now, or Bethany?
Yeah, if the planning commission is okay with it, Mr. Carpenter and I will work through an appropriate. Yeah, if the planning commission is okay with it, um, Mr. Carpenter and I will work through an appropriate um, timeframe for the removal. Um, or the reconstruction to make it conforming, our our goal is to make it conforming, not to take away the enjoyment of his property. Um, and so if we can issue a permit, uh, we'd be happy to do that.
Hmm, not for working it. Take your gentleman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is the dock setback information.
Okay, um, I don't know if you got a chance to read through the memo that I put together, um, I know Danny that you were interested in this information. I did find in the surface water use ordinance, uh, number four in section six, and this is surface zoning of all waters of Crow Wing County by restricting the placement of docks. It is already covered there. And so a dock appear or wharf must be set back a sufficient distance from the property line to ensure that any attached. Or adjacent boat lift, moored boat, attached deck T or L does not encroach on the riparian zone of an adjacent landowner or leasing. So that theoretically should suffice as far as um, any setback um, for that. But that would be under the regulatory authority of the sheriff's department of Crow Wing County. Um, it would not fall under ours. Now, we still issue boardwalk permits, and so anything that is in our regulatory authority. We do have setbacks provided. For that, and so those need to meet set, structure setbacks, and so there is a ten foot setback if a boardwalk is issued. And we talked about this before, where the boardwalk is anything above the OHW, a dock is anything below the OHW. Um, and in order to enforce that, generally speaking, we would need that OHW marked. Um, and so this is good news, in my opinion, that that the sheriff's department already made adequate, what I feel is adequate. Um, provisions for this situation.
And then tell me a little bit about sufficient, I mean, how do you?
Isn't that a fun word?
Yeah, how do you quantify sufficient?
Sufficient is whatever um, the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Department determines it to be.
So I I checked in, and I think, I can't remember if I was cha- talking to Jake Free, or if it was somebody else. But I look back on our conditions at our business, and it was always ten feet. And that was a recommendation that we got from the sheriff's department for placement, thinking that a dock is three feet, and then a lift is about eight. So if you're not encroaching on that imaginary line that goes out, I thought it was always ten feet.
Okay.
So I bet they don't make that, that regulatory um. Verbiage in.
They leave it vague, and for whatever reasons they do, but I have, in my experience, um, if there is a concern, and if you do contact the sheriff's department. Um, they're pretty responsive. I don't know if you've um, had any experience of anybody who's had that, but they've been very responsive, so. If there's any dispute, that is definitely something that you'd want to bring to their attention.
Okay. Thanks for looking into it.
Yeah.
If the city ever wanted to make. An ordinance about it, is that even possible?
You know, I talked to the, to the DNR, and um, it generally speaking, it would be so difficult to enforce. It would be so difficult to set up any parameters in which to. I mean, do we then have to permit, then we have to permit, right? Or we have to permit a dock, or maybe not, or, you know, if somebody comes in, and if. And if the regulatory authority is already given to the sheriff's department, there's a chance that we could be stepping on. Toes and.
Yeah.
And doing things we shouldn't be doing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So call the local sheriff if they try it again.
Really comes down to neighbors getting along.
Yeah, neighbors like these.
Or not.
Well, it's, it's Danny, so we had to consider, we, what happened at our property is, so the lot line was here, and they put the dock in sideways. Over that imaginary line.
Yeah.
And the sheriff came out and he made a move it. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Uh, city's planners report.
Thank you, uh, we approved fifteen permits, um, a few more since then, um, also, an administrative decision was granted. Um, we've never run into that quite yet. I did touch base with Josh Young, our chair, prior to issuing this, also with city staff. Um, to make sure that this is the path that we wanted to go. I'm not a big fan of administrative decisions there, under rare circumstances. Where it would make absolute no practical sense to bring somebody in front of the planning commission. Um, when we do an administrative decision, um, it is. Carefully vetted, um, and all put out, and we put, publish it on our website, and we also notify any contiguous neighbors. Um, in this instance, there was a failing septic system with a cesspool tank. That needed to be replaced when they submitted the design, the design met the standards, this was prior to us adopting, um. Our new shoreline ordinance, and so um, it met at the time, then when they went to put it in and obtain the permit, it did not meet. And so that we would have had to have them come in to get a variance. Uh, to do something that just a few months ago would have been an allowed use, and on top of it, this is um, a failing septic system, this is not anything that. We want to get in the way of a property owner. Um, furthermore, I had Martin Joyce, who did the original design, look into it. Uh, just to verify that there was no alternative place, location, or type of system that could be put in uh, to meet the need. Um, so if you want to read through the administrative decision, I did include it in your packet, but it's also on our, on our website. Questions?
Any more questions, comments? Keep an eye out for a new building application. Premiers truly. Don't be too hard on me. You can't sit up, how, what's, can he sit up here when, if it's uh?
No, I I abstain.
Ah, I'll abstain.
How big is the me on sign?
Massive. Massive. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All of in favor, I, I suppose, most carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
I'm moving. Staying in this one.